...pocket at that point.
Right.
Okay, on the next question, I don't know how I missed this before, but as Alderman Wesley was reading through, public transportation facilities. If we were ready to move forward with the train station construction, could this money have been allocated to that?
We were, in fact, planning on using this money because we ran over, so we were going to use this in addition and just put off doing platform lighting as another way to come up with funding for the overage on, you know, on the estimate.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. I'll make a motion to prepare with staff for a settlement agreement, a refund to purchase platform lightings, providing that we see what the platform lightings are before they get picked, and that's it. That's a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Now, we will be going over the fiscal year 2007 city budget amendment. This is for the new people on the block here. I think we do this every year. We have to close out all our accounts from 2005, 2006, right?
Oh, six, oh, seven.
Oh, six, oh, seven. We have to close all the counts out for accounting report. So, he's got PowerPoint, and in your packet, you should have got a list of all the money that, the budget amendments that we have. Some of them, some we were over budget, some we were under budget quite a bit. So, we have to do this every year about this time to close out our balance with the accountant. So, if you want to take us through the PowerPoint here, if there's any questions on that right now, or can we go forward with PowerPoint? We could go forward with the PowerPoint.
Thank you, Alderman Wesley. Yeah, the PowerPoint is in conjunction with the memo that was provided to you by Ms. Powers. It kind of condenses, it distills it down in a little bit quicker format, you know, just for the ease of viewing. Just real quick, a couple of definitional items. Four of the funds in the memo are actually budget transfers. That is, no budget authority is being modified, only line items are being adjusted, so the overall authority which in each fund is staying the same. There are five in the packet in which we are requesting an increase or a decrease in budget authority within the fund, and they are listed there below. The overall budget amendment that we're looking to get approval from the council on is $76,322, which will be outlined in the next few slides. The MFT fund, an increase of $10,650. Costs from ComEd for the streetlights this year came in higher than anticipated. Primarily, I believe, everybody, you know, is familiar with the increased costs in your home for electricity. We're not immune to that, just like everybody else.
It's coming out of motor fuel tax?
Correct. For this budget year, it was, yes. The special district, special business district fund, the increase in here is due to the sales tax agreement with Maher Lumber. They extended their period by a few months, which related to a delayed opening on their part at the beginning of the agreement.
Could I ask one question on that?
Sure.
Are we finished with them now?
With Maher, we are, yes.
So, we won't see any more Maher?
Yeah, yeah, no more Maher. The capital projects fund, we're actually decreasing the budget by $20,000. The bids and subsequent construction costs for the year came in lower than we had budgeted, so we're, you know, returning the money to the coffers, as it were. Land acquisition funding increase of $12,070. This relates to the Iliopolis and, I believe it's Iano properties. The closings on those did not happen as timely as we had originally anticipated relating into some property tax costs to the city, as well as increased debt service interest payments.
What, can I interrupt one more time? Just keep in mind, that money will be given back to us once we close on that property, so we do, during the budget amendment, they will be responsible for that. Am I correct, Mr. Holmes?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that is correct. As a matter of fact, we will get back all our costs that were invested, plus interest.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, just...
The final one is the special service area fund. The largest of the budget amendment increases, $52,602. This relates, the vast bulk of it, I believe, $50,000 relates to our costs for in-house engineering. This was the direction of the council to do a lot of the engineering for these service areas in-house. The rest relates to costs relating to the core samples for the projects and the Clefsted lift station, both items of which we do not do in-house, and so that's why we had to absorb those costs out of the areas as well. This time, if there's any further questions, I'll field those, and at the end, Alderman Wesley, we are looking for a motion to approve it.
Okay, I have one question.
Absolutely.
The budget increase for $52,602, the cost of in-house engineering. Was that, isn't that based on their salary, or am I correct there, or wrong?
Rather, rather, well, give it to Mr. Home. Use the engineering.
Okay.
Basically, we're recognizing that Dave Graff and Ingrid are working on, and spending a considerable amount of time, on special service areas. So, we're essentially charging their salaries off to the special service area because we're providing a service, an engineering design, to those, to those business owners as part of the roadway project.
But again, we will get that $52,000 back after special service area is done.
It's, it's, it's out of the big special service area fund, if you will.
Oh, it's out of?
Yeah.
So, we can't get that back from NFT funds?
No, we're charging against that fund to pay for their, to pay for their salaries.
So, we, so we got Dave Graff and we got who else?
Dave Graff and Ingrid Oberle.
Well, I don't know that person, so I didn't know that.
She's our new engineer. She joined us just earlier this summer, and basically, you benefit on the other side because instead of paying their salaries out of the general fund, now we're actually getting some of that money out of the special service area fund. So, there is a benefit, it's just kind of hidden in there.
And is she a full engineer, too?
She's also, she's just graduated from UIC, and she doesn't have her license yet because she's a new graduate, so she'll have four years, four years of experience before she gets her license.
Okay. And the Cliff Lift Station, that had to go out of house.
Right. Cliff Lift Station's an out, out of house.
Okay. Any questions on it? Mr. Coles?
That's out of the service, the service twelve and thirteen and fourteen.
Right.
Up on an outside, out of the industrial center.
Yes, it's those three service areas, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
So, I believe you're looking for, bear with me a minute, I lost it.
Information.
What's the recommendation you're looking for, budget amendment for 2006, 2007? What was the dollar amount? I lost it here.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Right, I'm trying to figure out.
The total dollar amount, Alderman Wesley, is $76,322 and zero cents.
Okay. I, that will be in a motion, dollar amount he said. Anything, any, do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Any questions on that?
One question.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Items considered special, future meeting, special sentences, Treasury report, report of Dial-Way program, Page Water Commissioner, Commission Backup Well Funding Request. Do we have anything else on there? Anyone care if they add anything? Okay, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'm calling to order the Public Works Committee meeting of August 23, 2007. Will the minute taker please reflect the same members present? I declare quorum. Next item is approval of minutes dated August 9, 2007. I make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is item number four, report and recommendation. It's a policy on private improvements within public right-of-way, and generally, well, it, I'll just say on this over to Mr. Home, and you can take us through the recommendation.
Back in 81, the city did look into the issue of irrigation systems. At that time, they did pass ordinance, establish a license agreement, and then implement a program, which, and I've told you this before, when I was on the private side, working for Bennison, working here, no one in city services knew it existed back then because, you know, I've told you, we always worked with the residents and reimbursed them. So, I'm not sure where between 1981 and 1995, it got lost there, but since 1995, I know that it hasn't been really utilized by city services, but I will say that community development has continued to collect those license agreements, and they have them on most addresses, well, any address that has received a permit for an irrigation system. So, irrigation systems are covered going into the future. We can look those up and address those. The other items that we really need direction on would be things like invisible fences, masonry mailboxes, brick paver driveways, landscape lighting, retaining walls, are any of those other things which cost the city money when we do roadway projects? Are any of those things, things that you want to regulate and say, if you place them in a right-of-way, you need to have a license agreement that says that they're, they're your liability as a homeowner, and the city's not liable for them and not, and not, you know, due to repay for them, basically, if they get damaged?
So, then, just to reiterate my understanding, that when we say liable, that, let's say we do the street project and the mailbox pillar has to be removed, the homeowner would be responsible to rebuild that?
That's what I'm, I'm raising that question, yes, because as you can imagine, a brick mailbox is fairly expensive to dismantle and then reconstruct.
Right, then, I would agree that that's how we should go forward to, to, when a homeowner applies for the permit, tell them upfront, it is your responsibility. Should we need to repave? Should we need to get underground? When you do these things, on the easement, and, and then that would be their responsibility going forward. Alderman Wesley?
This, it had been determined by the ordinance was passed in 1981. We have just paid out two sprinkler systems, knowing that they were in a right-of-way. How did we determine, how did we find this, that we do have ordinance 1981? Who determined and who found this?
Well, I just went through that. That's what I said, that community development has been collecting these all along, but they collect them, and then they go into the file, and they really haven't been, you know, utilized by the rest of the, rest of the city. And that's really city services ball that got dropped because we, you know, we, I say "we" historically, and we now present, should be contacting community development every year to get those addresses that say, hey, we got a sprinkling system at 123 Main Street. Do they have a license agreement on file? And if they do, then, you know, the license agreement covers us. But again, when I was in the private sector, and now I've been here, no one in city services even, even knows about these license agreements until, until now. So, the discovery came right from community development. They knew them all along.
But my question here now, if you don't mind me, Chairman, who is going to handle this now on? Who is going to have a copy of these addresses and all that?
Well, we're...
Because obviously, if another sprinkler company, if another contractor comes up here this year and asks for a sprinkler repair, for us, repair it? I'm going to go back and say 1981, we passed ordinance.
Well, it's actually very easy. We're going to let community development continue to do what they've always done, and as we work on a street, if we're on, you know, Walnut, and we're tearing up the curb, and we discover there's a, there's a irrigation system there, it's a matter of going to community development, saying 365 Walnut, do they have a license agreement? Yes, no? And then it's it. I mean, so it's, it's just a matter of that had never been done.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Coles?
I just want to get back to Ms. Wes, Alderman Wesley. When I put my system in, which you're talking about, I did have to get a permit, all right? And I did have to fill out all the papers and everything in order to put my system in, and that was before the street was developed. My system's been in since, I believe, 85, all right? The new system, the, I don't have a typical system, which they call a sprinkler system. I have an irrigation system, was put in by an irrigation outfit. I don't have them black pipe that they push through the ground, and this is a regular PCV pipes all over the, all over the, in the ground, starting out with two-inch in diameter and then sprinkling off, all right? But I did get all the permits, and I did get all the licenses. So, when the street was done, they tore up my sprinkler system, all right? And I had, I had to have it fixed. Now, I had it fixed by the same company that maintains it every year since 1985, which comes out, and they did, what they did is the job that they were supposed to do. And if you notice, there was a lot of difference between my price and the other fellow's price.
Right.
But that was done, and I did have a permit, and I did have the license. I don't know if he did or not. That I don't know. But I'm just letting you know that everything was done on a legit, all right?
Mr. Home?
If I can make the point, too, and I'll go by my experience when I was here before, my experience now, you're typically on an annual full reconstruction program, talking a total cost for, to do this for the homeowners of $5,000 or less. You're talking about, you know, a million dollars to two million dollar roadway project. That's, that's why, I guess, everyone was always following the theory, be it wrong as it was, that, you know, we reimburse, the grand total of all those reimbursements was really just a couple of thousand dollars, and you made the homeowners very happy because they got their systems replaced, and the city, the city walked away looking very good customer service. I agree, and technically, technically, the agreement is very clear about when it's damaged, who's responsible for replacing it, and certainly, this is why it's coming to you tonight, we can implement this agreement for irrigation systems, we can implement this agreement for other items in the right-of-way. I just want everyone to remember, we're not talking about $50,000 here annually, we're probably talking about five grand or less to fix people's irrigation systems and invisible fences.
And, and just to follow up to that, and then I'm going to recognize, Mr. Manager, that, I know you mentioned invisible fences and, and the other, but what about the paver brick driveways and that? If we start getting into, into those, would that get more costly?
A paver brick driveway will cost more, just because of labor.
Right.
Than a, than a, than a concrete driveway. Ideally, if you can stack the bricks off to the side, maybe it will be, will be similar in cost to a concrete driveway, but there's a lot of labor, and there's typically one or two on a job, so they'll give a high price for that because they know they can.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Manager?
Yes, I'd just like to address Alderman Wesley's question about why we couldn't track the permits. We had no tracking software, and I believe it was Alderman Winger who, when looking at the community development department, said, why can't we trace these things? And one of the first things that we had our intern, our young intern, that was Jeff Murmas do, was come up with a plan, and then we were able to research that, checking with other communities, and we came up with a software package where now, in the last two years, we track all the permits. That, in addition to our new financial software, should answer those questions that you had, and so we're on our way as far as sharing information between departments and everything like this. So, we have that now, ready to go. What we're looking for really is direction from the committee to say that any private improvement, such as the mailboxes, the brick pavers, the driveways, landscaping lights, and retaining walls, would come under this, that would require the homeowner to, to make the replacement, and that's what we're looking for. Otherwise, that burden falls on the city. There are other things that aren't included, I think, that they do. I mean, if you go down Central, for example, I was just driving down the other day, and see all these gigantic masonry mailboxes, and if any, anything comes along, or we have to tear up the, and get at the sewer water or anything like that, I mean, we're going into their, their, we allowed them to put it there. Well, I don't think we have permits for those things. We need to get, they need to have permits, and then it becomes their responsibility. In most, all communities, that is the public right-of-way, and anyone who uses the public right-of-way, you know, has to be responsible to the public because that's not really their property.
Alderman Wesley?
Gary, first of all, your statement that you made, it only costs us a little money. I don't care if it costs the city $100 to replace a sprinkler system. First of all, this was in place, okay? There was communication gap, again, between the public works and our building department, okay? That costs the city. I don't care if it's $50, okay? It's the taxpayers' money that shouldn't have been spent because there was ordinance out there, okay? So, don't tell me that, oh, it only costs us, and we please a citizen. Yeah, we did please that citizen, okay? But in the long run, we pleased that citizen on a city account to pay for a sprinkler system that we never should have paid for.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead, and I'm going to make a motion, and, so I make a motion to, to direct staff to work with the city attorney to update the ordinance and draft a new license agreement to develop a form, and to develop a formal policy and procedure to ensure that the license agreement is enforced by all departments and includes items such as masonry mailboxes, brick paver driveways, landscape lights, retaining walls, and the same, and bring back to council.
On, adding irrigation systems.
Okay, and, and the motioner will add irrigation systems in that as well. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is item number five, Elmwood Avenue, Row Use. Generally, I'm always very concerned about handing city property over to anyone or changing the right to use it in the future for traffic control, so I am leaning towards keeping everything as it is right now. I know we're looking at the train station area, and perhaps that the traffic will flow differently someday, so, but that's my initial take on it, but it looks like our city manager would like to discuss parts of this, and then I'll ask Mr. Home to take us through a summary, and then I'll call in Alderman. Mr. Manager?
Yes, thank you. We do have a resident who had brought this to my attention, that this was pending, and we had not had any plans to do anything with this, and he was concerned and wanted to bring his concerns to the committee, and I believe to talk about this, and if it's, with your permission, I'd like him speak to the issue, and then Mr. Home.
It's O'Connor, right?
Right.
Okay, Mr. O'Connor?
My name is Bernie O'Connor. I live at 150 East Potter. This road's been closed for about four and a half years. I emailed, I think, all of you. I've had horses there next to my home for four and a half years. These horses get knocked over. The city really, in my view, I haven't been bugging anybody in the city about this, but even people, and this is the honest to God truth, I met some people from the Cary subdivision over there, and they told me the place looked ratty. Now, I don't know how long it's going to take for the train station, I don't know what that's going to happen, but I don't see a problem with the one recommendation of putting a sidewalk in there. You still have the right-of-way, you still have everything there. If you decide in the future you want to reopen it as a street, I don't even have a problem if you put a two-way street in there. I just think this has been neglected for four and a half years. It's time that the city move ahead and do something here, and then if you want to change it later, I've got no problems with that. So, I certainly hope that we're not going to leave the status quo for the future. I think that's a wrong decision. I've put up with this for four and a half years. I don't think many people in Wooddale would want these horses where you're going out two, three times a week, putting them back up because people are driving over them, kids are knocking them over, throwing them on the lawn. The problem with this street is, it's not wide enough for two cars, and apparently, there's some people in the village that don't understand, if there's a car coming down in one way, you're going to have to drive on the, on the right-of-ways going the other way.
I'm going to agree that it, you know, if it's ratty-looking, and it sounds like it is, we need to do something to spruce it up, and, you know, horses isn't a good permanent solution, so let's look into either landscaping or perhaps a sidewalk. We can go through each option, but what I don't want to do is, is give that roadway up to another governing body or homeowners, and...
I'm next to it, and quite frankly, I don't want the property.
Right.
I don't believe that the city should give it up.
Right.
I think you should keep the right-of-way, but I think it should be a sidewalk, put in some dirt with grass seed or something, and, and close the, the entrance ways, the curbs at the street, otherwise, you will have people driving down it anyways.
Right. Sure, you're welcome, and, Mr. Home?
And I realize there'll be a discussion on that, but that, those comments would basically leave the one option then, and that would be to remove the roadway and construct a sidewalk through there, which would be kind of the second option I listed. I think staff in general feels the idea of providing pedestrian access through there is, is critical because of the train depot and proximity and wanting to promote people walking to the train. Whether that pedestrian access, you know, be in conjunction with any one of these three options, we think that that's, that's critical. My only downside with, with the construct the sidewalk only option is that we leave, we, we retain ownership of the right-of-way, but we also retain maintenance rights, maintenance responsibilities for the right-of-way, so, you know, it just means a long-term maintenance responsibility, but I don't, I don't think any of these three options are, you know, bad. I think they're, it's just a policy decision.
Sure, okay, thank you. Alderman Coles?
How long you lived there, Bernie?
I've lived there nineteen years.
All right, nineteen years, it's been the same road, isn't it? It's time, I've been here for 35, and it's, it's time it was changed. Nobody, the only guys that drive through there are the guys that really want to make a shortcut, and I think, I think a sidewalk is the best way. We wanted to put some steel poles when Gary was building, Cary was building a thing, and they said no, and so, I, I believe a sidewalk, a nice six-foot sidewalk in there, and grass on each side with curbs there, where they couldn't go over the curbs. I, I think that's, and giving it to the school board to make a playground there, that will make everybody there in that neighborhood, which is a quiet neighborhood, go bananas. That's my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Wesley?
So, Gary, your recommendation is putting, one of them is putting a sidewalk in there, but my, my question, we talked about possibly, have we thought about putting asphalt walk in there instead of concrete walk, in case we decide to take that out down the line, that we open that road back up? I'm just throwing that out.
Sure, I mean, I think that's viable, that'd be your, your call, it's, it's a viable option.
I mean, in, in case we decide to open it back up, and then maybe put, like Joe says, some shrubs around there? I agree, I, I don't think we should give it to the Park District or do a transfer with the Park District for kids' playground. I think we got enough right now in town. But the only drawback I have is putting a concrete driveway in, I mean, sidewalk is, if we decide down the line to remove it, it's going to be more costly to do that than the asphalt. I mean, and, and I think it will be a lot easier for us to maintain the asphalt than cement sidewalk. Maybe I'm wrong, but I, I don't know.
We can put it on the same rotation as our bike path. Like, this year is the first, now the bike path is two years old, we went in and crackfilled and sealed the bike path. We can just put it on a similar rotation.
So, I mean, I don't know, that's Mr. Coles' word there. I mean, that's what I would like to see done instead of a cement.
I would suggest we put curbs down or put something so nobody can drive in it.
Oh, right, you could do a high...
With a blacktop, it has a tendency to have people drive in because they see blacktop. If they have a sidewalk, they have, they know what a sidewalk is. If they have a sidewalk, they have, they know what a sidewalk is, I hope, behind the wheel.
Mr. Holm?
Something maybe like the Forest Preserve District does, where they have the post that's up, and then if you need to, you can just fold it down, it's locked and up.
Something like that.
Alderman Caddala?
Yeah, I'm okay with Alderman Wesley's idea of blacktop. I think we're kind of leaning towards a direction of just making this pedestrian access anyway. My concern and my question to Gary would be, long-term, because I don't see us turning this back into a two-way, ever into a two-way road, to be honest with you. Long-term, Gary, the lifespan of a concrete driveway, of a concrete sidewalk versus the maintenance cost of blacktop, is it a wash? Does blacktop end up costing more over fifteen years? Best guess.
If you're going to say we're never going to go back to a road there...
Let's say never at this point, since there's no plans.
A whole life cycle, a whole life cycle, definitely concrete.
And the cost to tear out if we decide to do something negligible between the two because you're still bringing equipment in there to scoop it out and haul it away? Approximately same amount of material. So this way, like Alderman Coles says, it's a sidewalk, it looks like a sidewalk, there's, there's no question that somebody thinks they might try to drive through it, and I don't think we have to maintain it, so...
Okay, so it sounds like there's a majority of council that is looking to go towards removing the roadway and constructing a sidewalk or walkway. But now we need to decide on blacktop versus sidewalk, cement or concrete. Alderman Wesley?
Gary, are you looking for it to be installed this year or next year?
This item wasn't identified in the '07, '08 budget, so this would have to be installed as part of the '07, or I'm sorry, the '08, '09 budget, next year's budget.
Oh, it will be next year unless there's money available to do it. If the cost coming back resurfacing is lower than we bargained for, am I right?
Well, the resurfacing project's already opened, and we added that other street. So I think we're going to use all the money into the resurfacing project. And the sidewalk project right now, looks like we're going to use every dime in there. So I don't know that we'll have a lot of money left over this year.
Along those lines, so this would be in the next fiscal year's projects. But is there something that we could do temporarily? How many horses are out there now?
There's three on each end or four on each end. I mean, there's, they're, they've literally been out there, as the gentleman said, for years now. And I think that was closed off at the start of the construction for Cary Townhomes, right?
That's right.
Well, what can we do in the interim to be able to remove the horses? Can we put up those devices that you just spoke of, where when you drive over it, it goes down or, you know?
That might be a possibility. The other, the other option, which isn't the most aesthetically pleasing option, but we have them, and that is we could put out some, you know, jersey walls, some concrete barricades, put out a concrete barricade on either end. It's certainly not, I don't know that's any more aesthetically pleasing than the barricades, though. Maybe we could install and then, but I don't know how those are installed. I don't know if you can install them and then pull them out and then use them in a future application. I just don't know, I mean, I don't know the details.
Could I?
Okay, is that something that we could look into, though? As an interim solution until we get the sidewalk in? And the other thing, perhaps we could just plant some real inexpensive bushes along there? Or do vehicles still need to get through there occasionally?
No, they shouldn't, but we'd be looking to do this as part of a spring project. So I don't know that we want to plant bushes now because we'll probably end up tearing them up in the spring.
Okay, okay, thank you. Alderman Wesley?
One other question. Gary, why don't you go back and look at the budget? And maybe there, there might be something we could cut out that they don't think they're going to use for this year in their budget and move it? I don't know. I mean, if you want to wait the year, then it's going to have to be next year's budget. I mean, because it ain't a budget item. But I'm just saying, if there's extra money somewhere else in his budget that a capital project that we are not going to complete this year, or because we didn't jump ahead to get it all in, maybe we could take that capital project and put it towards, I don't know. But maybe you could look at that before we make that decision.
Mr. Holm?
The reality of our current sidewalk project is, and we're passing a resolution for it tonight, we'll probably, and our goal is to get cedar done this year as part of the current sidewalk project. Addison Road would be our next priority after that, and then the maintenance and repair items after that before winter comes. So I don't think we're going to get all those done before winter time comes. So immediately next spring, as soon as we can start doing concrete, we'll be into that project, and we probably can just add this right, right along the end of it.
Alderman Coles?
Bernie has been good, he's been moving these horses back and forth for four years. I think we should be able to put something in, in there permanently, just so he doesn't have to keep every weekend changing these horses. Couldn't we put a couple steel pipes in there, just like sign pipes with a big sign in it on both sides? Anything, just to stop him from moving these...
During the winter, we'll, we'll come up with some solution towards that problem.
Something so he doesn't have to keep moving these horses.
And I'm sure he doesn't want the concrete barricades.
No, the concrete barricade he can forget, but... Because if he can get anything. No, no, anything to stop a car from going in and out of it, that's what he's looking for.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and make two motions. One of which is to, in our next budget process for sidewalks, to include the Elmwood Avenue ROW to install a sidewalk as well as curving on, on each side of, on each side of that ROW. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next motion would be just a direction to Mr. Holm and his staff to come up with an interim solution to, to this row and something that's a little more neighborhood-friendly and a little more aesthetically pleasing. Is there a second?
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Next item is the 2007 Motor Fuel Tax Sidewalk Improvements Resolution. It is a report and recommendation. And this allotment of funds is for various public sidewalks that we are going to install this fall, late summer. And the amount is in a, in the amount of two-hundred thousand dollars. Include, as Mr. Holm mentioned, it's, it's Central.
Cedar.
I mean, Cedar, and a stretch on Addison Road, and the improvements of sidewalks, various identified sidewalks. Primarily, I've seen a lot of markings in the third ward where we're looking at trying to fix the severely cracked, spalled sidewalks as well. And would this funding also cover those? Or is that a different bucket of money that we're going to use to repair sidewalks?
That'll actually be a different, a different fund, but we're going to combine them into one large project.
Okay.
So the two-hundred thousand is really the capital project, sidewalk.
Okay, so the new...
The new sidewalk.
Okay, okay, so...